I would like to call to order the November 9th, 2021 School Board Meeting of the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 Board of Education. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Laura, if you wouldn't mind doing the roll call, please.
Grandlin here, Mueller here, Lewis here, Palmer here, Severson.
Here.
And Superintendent Stenvik.
Here.
All right, gang's all here. All right, mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We'll move on to the section for agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence, and start with the approval of an agenda. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
No motion.
Laura, second?
Lauren.
Lauren, that's right. I do know your names.
Molly.
Molly. All right, any discussion on the agenda? That's my mic doing that weird thing. No discussion, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. Announcements. On November 11th and 12th, Thursday and Friday, there's no school for grading and in-service days. On November 16th, Tuesday, 5:30 PM, there's a school board work session here in the community room. On November 23rd, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's a regular school board meeting here in the community room. And then again, on November 25th and 26th, which are Thursday and Friday, there's no school. And December 14th, Tuesday at 4:00 PM, there's a regular school board meeting here in the community room.
Tuesday at what time?
Four? Safe? What did I say?
You said 4:00 PM?
I did, thanks. 7:00 PM. Me and numbers tonight, not having a good, uh, not having a good day. Thanks for the correction. Correspondents. Superintendent Stenvik, is there any correspondence?
Chair Severson, there's no correspondence at this time.
All right, awesome. Communication to the board. At this time, any citizens or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, will request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Did we get any blue cards? All right. Good? All right, we'll keep going. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which contains the personnel reports and school board minutes from October 12th and 26th, regular school board meetings. The October 9th work session and the October 26th special called meeting. Can I get a mo- a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No motion.
This time, actual Laura.
Second.
And Mary. All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Great. We'll move on to our discussion reports and information items, and we'll start from reports for members of the board. And you know how I pick the order? I always thought you guys might want to know this. I just go, who didn't start first last time? And so try to rev- it's hard to be the first, so if I chronically pick you as first, just let me know. But I try to, I try to rotate it. So this time Laura, does that seem, seem fair?
I'm fine with going first.
I put them in my notes, so I just have an order.
I'll keep it, I'll keep it real brief. I attended the interview, special call meeting, just prior to this one. And I also attended the monthly meeting for Northeast Metro 916, as well as the 916 Foundation. I also had a meeting with them last week, looking for, uh, doing some more strategic planning and stuff. So I guess I have been voluntold on a couple of more committees, so that'll be fun. I'll report out on those as well. Thank you.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Mary?
All right, so right before this, I attended the Subcommittee on Policy and the special called meeting. Since our last meeting, I also had an opportunity to meet with Superintendent Stenvik. And I had a meeting with Chief Austin, who joins us here tonight as well. I've messaged with Lauren, and then some communication with families, students, and teachers. Lots of people feeling really excited about the shot clinic this weekend.
All right.
That's it.
Great, thank you. Molly?
Yes, I'm going to report out on a couple of, a few weeks. I missed the last board meeting for my son's football playoff game. So I did attend the work sessions on 10/19, 10/26, and earlier tonight. Also attended several volleyball games, football games, a pep fest, and the Alumni Foundation Dinner. Also specifically had a lot of conversations with students revolving around one of the questions that we'll be discussing tonight, one of our agenda items. And just wanted to say thanks to all the people that made things happen to have a huge student section over at the football game on Friday night. That was awesome to see our fan section bigger than I believe the home team was. So that was wonderful, even if the outcome wasn't quite what we were hoping for. So thank you all. And I also had conversations with Superintendent Stenvik and Member Mueller and Member Severson. Chair Severson, sorry.
That's all right. I can be a regular member as well.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks. We'll move on to Lauren.
In no particular order, I also had an opportunity to attend a couple of football games. And as you guys know me, I go purely for the pep band. No, I support football players too, but really excited to hear the pep band play. Like Molly said, I loved that we brought the pep band over to the game last week as well, so that was a lot of fun to see them there. Also got to see a girls swim meet, went to a girls volleyball game, attended the special called meeting prior to this. The Alumni Foundation Scholarship Dinner, had several conversations with community members, and as already mentioned, Member Lewis and Member Grandlin as well.
All right, now leaves me. Just like everyone, I was at the special called meeting before this. I was at the Subcommittee Subcommittee on Policy before that. Laura was also there just for the minutes. And we got to meet our new student board member, which was fun to have her as part of the group and slow the process down and actually talk about what we're doing and why we're doing it. It's really fun to learn together again. I was also at the Alumni Scholarship Dinner, and that was a blast. It was the most crazy kind of invigorated scholarship dinner in a long time. Been to a couple, couple football games. Ask me more about why later. Had conversations with Superintendent Stenvik and Member Lewis, had communications with community members. And I went to the AMSD meeting last Friday, Association of Metropolitan School Districts. I had to leave early because of an appointment, but I was able to hear about how they created the new social studies standards for the state. It was actually, I never actually knew the process, and a teacher who had participated in the committee to do it explained the process. And he actually, he taught, he taught us really well, so he must be a really good teacher. So I got to learn about that, and I was glad to hear it. And I think that's my whole report. Superintendent Stenvik?
All right, yes, I have a brief report. We continue to monitor the local COVID case rates. I feel like that was the mantra last year, but we're, it's back again in full force, and the cases, the local cases have spiked up again. So thankfully, this Saturday, the district is hosting a vaccine clinic for ages five and up. It'll be at the Highlander Center. There'll be a book fair, community, there's community support, and I believe there's still some appointments left. But we have many hundreds and hundreds have filled up, so that's great. Over the last couple of weeks, Executive Director Niangbo and I have been able to get out into classrooms in early childhood, Valley View, Columbia Academy, and the high school. So it's really important that we're connecting with students and staff, and then debriefing with admin on making sure that we're propelling the momentum for our heighten up plan, right? And just yesterday, we found out that we, the district has been awarded a grant from the state for additional teacher mentorship support. So that's really great news, and the Department of Teaching and Learning will be working on implementing that. I've been able to make a few follow-up connections after the Alumni Foundation Dinner. Some promising connections were, were made there. And I had communication with Chair Severson, Member Grandlin, and Member Lewis, and I thank you all for your time.
All right, great. Move on to our elementary strategic roadmap. And I see Executive Director Niangbo is leading a host of elementary school principals with Principal Sasek, Principal Jenke, and Principal Coolman.
You are correct, Chair Severson. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. Tonight, we have decided to present all three elementary building, building vision card, so that you can get them early in the year rather than later on after we've crossed January 1st. So I will start respectively with Highland, and then we'll do North Park, and then we'll eventually get to Valley View. And so give me just a second to show my, to share my screen. So our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. All our core values will be represented in each of the elementary school building vision cards that will be presented. This is an informational update, and there is no governance at this time. And you know that, as you know, the Columbia Heights Public School Strategic Roadmap is a guide to help us focus on several areas. Key strategies to address achievement and performance in our school district. And so tonight, I have Principal Jenke, who will present on the Highland Elementary School Building Vision Card.
All right, good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to present to you. As you can see on our first strategic direction, A, improve our students' experience and school climate. I have very similar results to what you have seen in previous years, with the exception of teacher absences. With most of our education being online in distance learning last year, our teacher absences were very, very low. So it was a very significant reduction. But I, I put it in the, the no change category, just marking that it was a very different year and a different method of, of being absent. Because many teachers were able to work from home even though they may have been ill. Go ahead, Bondo. In strategic direction, A, improve our students' experience and school climate. Again, very similar numbers. We had no out-of-school suspensions and no in-school suspensions last school year. Go ahead.
I did.
Oh, sorry, it's not moving on my screen. All right, in strategic direction, B, improving our students' academic achievement. We had a dip in our FAS scores in reading and math, as many students did not return to the buildings. We did see pretty significant growth of students who were able to come back early, if they were able to come back February 1st. We saw much more promising growth than students who stayed in distance learning. However, that will be, certainly be our focus this year is on students growing. That is our, our goal for this school year. Communicating, so our, our daily interactions with students, families, and community was very different last school year. We did have a pretty significant increase in our percentage of parents using ParentView. We attempted to do, not to have to send home our report cards via US mail. So we did a, a couple pretty significant asks of parents to complete the ParentView login, and so that they were signed up. We, we still really had to work on that this fall, so we're increasing the number of parents signed up, but we're still not at vision. But it is a goal that we're working on. I did have a lot of communicating with families via CSO, Blackboard, slash some more last school year. And of course, our teachers were having daily interactions with families and students via CSO last year. Improving our daily interactions with students, family, and community. About the two significant drops were really, because of the pandemic, we weren't able to come together often in the building. We did have parents that would come, obviously for bag pickup. So at each, at each quarter, we were having families come and pick up bags of supplies, as well as at the end, beginning and end of the school year for picking up and dropping off devices. But it wasn't our normal movie nights or Turkey Bingo, family fun nights that we would normally have. Our first event this school year that we're going to be doing inside the building is Turkey Bingo coming up on November 19th. So we are going to be continuing the tradition of bringing our families in, but it's just going to be on a more spread out scale that we weren't able to do last year. We also had a pretty significant drop in encore participation in C2.5. Again, due to the pandemic and the fact that encore was additional time on devices, which families, most families didn't want for their children. Security and effectively managing our resources have all either stayed the same or have improved. We spent a lot of time in PLCs last year, working on curriculum and instruction, and that was across grade levels, district-wide. So that one did increase to vision last year. And I think you'll hear from probably all of the principals, we were significantly under our budget. We just didn't really have much opportunity to spend, as we didn't have a lot of students in the building. For school goals for last year, from 2020 to spring 2021, the percent of students in the high risk of not meeting spring benchmark will decrease by 8%. Building wide in both fast literacy and fast math. We did see pretty nice growth in several grade levels. However, we did not meet our goals. I think in part due to the fact that we did have about half of our students who stayed out on distance learning that did not make as much growth as we were hoping for. The best part of being out in the pandemic and kind of modifications that we made is we did have a Zoom option for many meetings that we had, like EL Family Night last year, as well as kindergarten registration and some other parent nights. We also had Zoom options for conferences, which were highly attended and very positively received by our families. And then I added just a couple pages of pictures. So one that I wanted to highlight is this summer, we had a very large group of teachers that participated in Equipped for Reading Success. It was a book study. The book is written by David Kilpatrick. And you'll see, if you can go back one slide, Bondo, I just want to point out, you're noticing all the words underneath the clock. This is a kindergarten teacher who added this to her classroom after receiving that training, but it's a complete phonics awareness training. Normal, so really showing students wearing masks, being able to engage with other kids, which is still awesome, that we're able to have kids come in and safely work together in classrooms. And that's it. Are we going to take questions at the end, Bondo?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I mean, if there are any questions, we can go right now so that you can answer them.
Does anyone have any questions for Highland specifically? All right, looks like we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. Bear with me while I get to my next presentation here.
You're getting, you're getting a clicking workout tonight.
Yes, indeed. My computer is frozen. Give me one second.
Computers have a great sense of timing. Yep.
We have too many screens. There we go. All right.
So they, they edit out all the dead air, right?
Yeah, no, this is, this is live, this is live. So.
Otherwise, Principal, oh, there it is.
I was going to say, I have to perform.
So Principal Sasek. Again, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. I am here tonight with Principal Sasek, who's going to present on the building vision card for North Park. Our mission in Columbia Heights, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong and all succeed. All the core values will be displayed in tonight's presentation. And this is an informational update and no governance questions. And as I said before, our key message tonight is to show some of the work that was done at North Park School for Innovation. And I'm going to pass it on to Principal Sasek.
Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik, members of the board, good evening. Thanks for, thanks for having me. This will go a little bit more quickly because I think Principal Jenke has really covered an awful lot of, of similar data in the same areas. I'd like to discuss our school goals for last year first. We, we, we had very high goals. We, for fast literacy, which is our A reading assessment that we give three times a year. Our goal was that 75% of our students would make typical or aggressive growth. And then if you want, go ahead and click, Bondo, we had a very similar goal, same goal in fact, for A math. And those were, those were hefty goals, and well, we'll, we'll see how we did. So I'm going to show the same, the same areas that Principal Jenke did. And so our attendance remained steady. We were just below 84%. Our mental health screener was down last spring. We covered less than 60% of our students. However, we did make up for it this fall. All of our returning students, we did mental health screeners for them. And then after six weeks, we did mental health screeners for all of the new students. So as, as of today, 100% of those students have been assessed, and services begin Monday. And our teachers did more PD focused on trauma than I think we've ever done. So we were at the vision in that area. Suspensions were, were down. We actually had one out-of-school suspension, and we had no in-school suspensions. And that, that trend so far, as of the beginning of November, is, is holding steady this year as well. Our teachers got really good at learning management system usage last year, as everyone knows. So we had 100% of teachers, you were not able to function as an educator if you weren't able to do that. Our FAS scores did not meet our goals. We were under 39%, so we saw a significant dip from, I believe it was around 65% the previous year. And we do not have accurate data for our students' math back targets because of the instability of, of what our environment was like for assessment last year. Principal communications were, I think they're always fairly high, but I think there was probably more communication last year, probably a lot more than, than parents even wanted. And so we were at vision there. We also had almost 100% of our families on CSO and 100% of our teachers using CSO. And events promoting academic achievement, you know, Principal Jenke, that was actually clever. I had not thought of the events where we had parents picking up materials. I counted our conferences, and then we were able to eke out the annual North Park Spring Barbecue and at the very end of the school year, which was a wonderful event, not quite as well attended as in the past, but we did serve over 500 meals, which, and it was just so fantastic just to see people out. And we had really close to 100% of our families that were visiting CSO at least once a week. And, and our, you know, we found that regardless of the platform, our parents attend conferences. We were at 93% attendance again this past year, and that was including both Zoom conference call and in-person conferences. As far as reducing variability goes, as always, or all of our grade levels and departments have, have common prep, and they use it daily. And I believe Principal Jenke hit the nail on the head. We spent less than half of our budget last year. And just one page of pictures, really to promote the work that our students are doing in sustainability. In particular with, with the, the work of our sustainability teacher, Stan Maraz. He is, he's creating curriculum as, as we go along. And thus far, it's been almost completely based on our biodigester. And, and we're finding many, many different ways that we can teach, working towards a carbon neutral lifestyle, using our biodigester. Also, you'll see the, on the top there, all the cardboard, that's right outside our STEM lab and art studio. Every grade level, every student has, is taking part in, in, in creating a pollinator garden, so that we can attract more of our pollinators. And we did our STEM PLCs last week with every grade level, and every single one of them said they want more. They really are enjoying, and their students are very much enjoying, the sustainability work that Mr. Maraz is carrying out. And, and so far, it's been really effective and, and incredibly popular. Questions?
I have one.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Principal Sasek, if you could just talk a little bit about A14, the mental health screener? I'm just curious as to what, why that number is lower than I would have expected when it says percentage of identified students that are offered services?
And that was because we didn't have all of our students in person last year. And what we did is, as far as the actual completing the screener goes, we completed the screener for the onsite students last spring. And then for the students when they returned this fall, we completed the screener for them this fall. So as of this fall, 100% of our students have had this screener. And 100% of our students needing services have been offered those services. Last year, it was a little bit more difficult to offer such a wide range of services when we had so many of our students that were not onsite.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I piggyback on Molly's question? I know I've asked this before. Can you clarify, what is the screener that we use?
It is, well, the screener that we use, it's, well, I'll, I'll kind of walk you through how it works. Each one of our teachers does a screener where they rate their, their top 10 externalizing students. So who may be showing externalize, external emotion. And they also rank their 10 most internalizing students. And now the internalizing students are really the most difficult students to identify. And those are, those are the ones that, that we really work hard trying to identify. And then another screener is used at that point for teachers to identify the intensity. And then what we do as, as a leadership team, with our school social worker, Kim Wicker, and our Dean of Students, School Psych, and myself, is we sit down with all of the students and their scores, and then we take a look at the services that we have. Lee Carlson, therapist. This year, we have, our social worker is, is running social groups. Our school psychologist, Jack Dofino, is running social groups, and then Nathan Meyer, our dean, is also running social groups. The need is far greater than it's ever been, and it always has been quite great. So this year, we're pulling out all the stops, and because we are having so many people running social groups, every student that needs a social group will. every student that needs a social group will be, be able to be offered social groups. And we also are working with Lee Carlson. And actually, our therapist, her docket is currently full. And so as we all suspected, our students are in great need of social emotional support. And that is, I think, why it worked out well for us to do the screener again this fall.
Wonderful. Thank you. Just a brief follow-up. Do, is there a possibility of getting like what it is the teachers fill out? Like what the, what they're looking for with externalizers and internalizers? Like, does that get spelled out?
It does, yes.
Okay. Can we add that to the board packet?
Sure can.
Thank you so much.
Yep, you bet.
Other North Park questions? All right, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Our last presentation of the Building Vision Card. Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stanvik. Valley View is our third elementary school that will be presenting its Building Vision Card. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. All the core values will be represented in tonight's presentation. This is an informational update, no governance questions. And as you've heard from two principals previous to Principal Coleman, there was a strong focus on academic and that you'll be able to speak more. And with that, I will pass it on to Principal Coleman.
Thank you. Chair Severson, Superintendent Stanvik, members of the board, thank you for having me. So as Principal Sasek and Principal Jankie had said, you're gonna see, you're hearing a lot of the same thing. I'm choosing to highlight things that are stuck out at Valley View so we can kind of give you a snapshot of what we experienced last year. As they had said, and I think it was probably one of the celebrations out of pandemic year, is teacher absences were very little. So we were in the visionary category there. The number of students attendance days dipped and dipped quite a bit from the 90, I believe we were at 91%, and I'm sorry, that's not on there, to the 74 and 78. One of the things that we did to really work with that was had an attendance team that met twice a week. Really tried to connect and connect with families to see what barriers were there and also support in any way need, or any way we could. Lots of home visits, lots of calls, just fostering those relationships. Mental health screener, again, that took a dip. When we, we gave the screener and the number of students, we have one social worker that is working very hard and she was connecting with families. And we knew that. We knew the need was great. And so what we did is we utilized our COVID relief funds for tutoring. And a large majority of staff at Valley View, not only teachers, but our homeschool liaison, our dean, held tutoring sessions, whether it's one-on-one or small group, to just connect with kids, to play games, to support academically, to just be in their lives outside of the school realm to help support them. And I know this is not a, an official practitioner, but it was also a way to, to connect kids with school and to also support them social emotionally. So that was, that was good for us. No suspensions, no in-school suspensions. It was a beautiful year. We had some great behavior. So that trend is still going upward. We're looking forward to that. Mr. Nwembwe, you wanna go next? Teachers utilizing the learning management system, that was a necessity, just like Principal Sasek, Principal Jankie said. We, 90 plus, I mean, we survived off of Zoom and Google and Schoology or CSO the whole year. Our scores did also dip, and that was expected. As hard as our teachers were working and hard as our students were, were learning, we didn't live up to what we needed to do. So we are really focusing on that this year. One of the things with the spring math, we've seen some very encouraging results from that and teachers are excited about that. The same thing with PLCs and how they're focused on accelerated learning and getting that growth. So we're looking for a big change that way. Parent view, we're still in high concern. And there's some things that we're addressing with, with parent view that we found out last year that aren't equitable, that we're dealing with. They have a hard time translating our report cards. So when we send report cards home, the English version is available, but our second language families who need it in Spanish, Arabic, Somali, aren't able to get that. So we chose not to go that venue, but still mail report cards home. I know Director Tarkwell is aware of that and is working on that, but we want to make sure that it's equitable and we're pushing out. Communication with families is, sorry, Bondo, I jumped. Evening promoting, Valley View, we, we needed and we sensed that we needed to stay together as a community. And it was hard with us being at home and the shifts between in-person learning and home learning or heights from home. We had a lot of events, and those events included virtual events, virtual bingo. We also did a winter extravaganza, which ended up being a spring extravaganza because there wasn't really any snow by the time we had it. We connect with our families. And that was, that was really important. And then at the end of the year, we were able to partake in our fun run and everything else that we had. So it was a good ending to a very chaotic year. Some of the things that we learned, like with conferences, and we're taking, is we offered Zoom conferences last year. We had a very high participation rate. That was wonderful, and we are continuing on that this year, but offering parents a choice. Whether they want to come in person or still sustain that Zoom conference. But the most beneficial was that we were able to utilize translators to translate at conferences via Zoom. Even if we're sitting in the same room together with the parent, we can log on and zoom in an interpreter. And it allows our, our EL teachers to be EL teachers, to engage in those conferences and not use them as interpreters. So that was a real bonus and a real learning from last year. Sorry, Bondo. Number of grade levels, departments using planning time. I cannot stress enough how thankful I am to Teaching and Learning and District Office for setting up the, the structure we had last year to really set the foundation for PLCs this year. We did some really heavy lifting across the district and, and really collaborating with all teachers at all three elementaries on standards, prioritizing standards, writing common formative assessments. So that common planning time was probably the, the shining star that came out of COVID to really set the foundation for what we're doing this year and years to come. And our budgets, like you said, we, Principal Sasek, Principal Jankie said the same thing. We utilized them. We didn't, we, we still had a significant share left, but we did spend it on augmenting some of our guided reading library earlier in the year because we knew we were coming back with kids and we needed that. So, questions you may have? Oh, sorry. And my goals. I apologize. 75% of students will be articulate, respond to level one and two, three questions. And then 100% of teachers will utilize PLCs to inform instruction and improve student proficiency by 10% on the MCAs. That we didn't meet. We also had a significant number of students who didn't take the MCAs. The 75% of students we did work on, we did not make that goal as of yet, but we are continuing to work on that now. And then 5% increase on the MCAs. Again, that was to be determined because of a lack of credible data, so. And the pictures that we have, so this is of our virtual open house. In lieu of an in-person open house, we did a video montage and bit mojis so that parents could learn about our teachers and about our classrooms. And as you see here, this is an orientation session that we had at the beginning of the year to bring families in, to meet the teacher, to get all their supplies and move on, or to get ready for distance learning. This is the winter extravaganza, and I'd like to thank the Columbia Heights Boosters Club for helping and serving hot dogs that day. As you can see, we had a fire, but there was no snow on the ground. We wore many, many sleds. That wasn't utilized, but hopefully will be utilized this year if, if we get some snow and maybe even this Friday by a few teachers if they're crazy enough, if we get some snow. And then the last one is just the end of year staff picture and celebrations. We made it through the year. This has been a tradition at Valley View to come out, to take a picture, to celebrate, celebrate our staff who have left, have retired, or have moved on. And then also just come together one last time. And one thing that you didn't see here was we brought in a COVID pinata that everybody took a big crack at. We're trying to drive it away, but obviously it's still with us. And then this last picture is my first year of the Valley View Fun Run. And Board Member Granland, you might see that I'm a little wet in this picture. She might have had something to do with a big water bottle being dumped over.
I did not have anything, I did not dump any water on you, sir. I.
My daughter were in cahoots.
I believe a fourth grade teacher was involved.
Director Nwembwe was there. He is very, very fast. I think he probably set the record. Is very fast as well. But it was a 100-degree day. We had a huge number of families come out, and it was just a great way to end the year. It was the last weekend of school, and we're gonna do it again this year. So it was beautiful. Good way to end it. Now, are there any questions?
I see Member Granland raised her virtual hand.
I did. I thought I'd be appropriate in that way. Principal Coleman, first of all, I thank you so much for calling out so much that what Valley View is doing in terms of equity work. I think it really matches what we're working on here at the board. So thank you so much for your efforts with that. I think it speaks volumes to the families that we serve. You said that attendance was down and you had a team that spoke with families to see sort of what, what, what the barriers were. Can you, do you have any summary of what those barriers were that you found?
A lot of it was technology, you know, and, and just how do we use it? And, and I think that was a big learning that we received last year is that a lot of our parents aren't tech savvy. And so there was a lot of teaching going on. I know Ms. Adriana, who was our homeschool liaison, worked many, many long hours to support our families. That was a big one. It might have been parents not being able to be at home. They're working. It, it, fatigue. I mean, that was a lot of it towards the end. And I know in one of the slides, we talked about our, our number of families connecting with CSO diminished greatly after Thanksgiving, but I think it was a fatigue. Also, we were introduced to Zoom and I started pushing Zoom out via Blackboard too. But it, it was, I think it was just fatigue over a long time and being on Zoom and, and just the frustration and, yeah, it was, it was really about connecting with families. I think that was the big thing and, and eliminating barriers. Some of it was they didn't know how to log on. Some of it was they couldn't get out of bed. Some of them were, were just there by themselves. And so how do we help them connect and get them motivated to connect?
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Any general questions that people have? All right. Well, thank you for all of you who presented tonight and for sharing what's going on in your schools. Looking forward to hear this, personally, next year, when we have some more typical data to work with. We can hear some more of those standards and hear how some of this heighten up stuff, hopefully, moves the ball forward academically for these kids. So we appreciate all the hard work you all do. So thank you. All right, we'll move on to the School Resource Officer, and tonight we have Director Hennickens, Director Nwembwe, and the Columbia Heights Chief of Police, Lenny Austin, with company. You can introduce your company.
All right. Chair Severson, members of the board, thank you. I have Captain Matt Markham with me tonight. I think most of you know Matt. He works very closely with the school district, probably more specifically with Brian Hennickens and the principals in general. And I thought it'd be good to have him here to answer any additional questions that I might not be able to answer. So with that, I'm not sure, Bondo, who do we want to start this presentation with?
Yes, so we're gonna start and then we'll chew you when your time comes. So I will let Brian share the screen and then share the PowerPoint and then we'll start.
All right.
Give me one second here and I'll get that shared. It's always, it's like the window disappears when you want it.
Mm-hmm, of course.
Okay, assuming everybody can see that now?
Yes.
Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stanvik. So as you heard, we are here tonight. Director Henniken, myself, and Chief Lenny and Captain Markham to give you an overview of our School Resource Officer program as well as present on the contact and the relationship that we have with the police. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating a world of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong and all succeed. All the core values will be represented in tonight's presentation. This is an informational presentation that will be followed by an action item on November 23rd at our next regular board meeting. So to start us off, you know, the Columbia Heights Public Schools SRO program in collaboration with the Columbia Police Department has a mission statement which is creating a positive relationship between youth and police to identify, correct, and prevent delinquent behaviors and activities. Now, there are also primary responsibilities for the SROs as they work in our schools. Number one, it's law enforcement. Number two is education. And number three, it's school resources. Just to give some context to some of the work that we did last year with respect to the SRO program. In 2020-21, it's actually close to about this same time we had presented to the school board on two different surveys that were administered. The first survey, which was a focus group of 40 students that we attempted to reach, but were able to successfully complete that with about half of that number. And then after the presentation to the board, we had conducted subsequent survey which was encapsulating students from seventh through 12th grade, and 616 of them responded to that survey. And in that survey, a few highlights that came through is that there was overwhelming support for the School Resource Officers. And the question may be, why such great response from students when we're going through a tough year with the murder of George Floyd? Well, the key element of what came through the survey was that there is a strong relationship between the SROs that we have in our schools and students. They know them and they build strong relationships with some of the activities that you will hear in the presentation by the Chief. And so another component that came very clear was the trust factor. 90% of the students surveyed from Columbia Academy showed that they trust Officer Farah. And then 87% of the students that were surveyed at the Columbia Heights High School showed that they trust Officer JP. And it's not enough to just stay with our data, but we also looked at some of the other school districts who may be similar in size to us. And we've also decided to continue to have SROs in their schools. They showed data similar to what we found out. Number one, they administered survey which gave them similar results to ours. And most importantly, I'm gonna highlight two of them. In those surveys, just like ours, students of colors highly, were highly in favor of SROs in their schools for protection, for community building, for relationship development, and for just engaging in conversation. And there was a feeling of safety. And the second element that was highlighted in, by those at the school survey is that there was a high percentage of student trust for SROs, which again was true in the surveys that we also conducted.
All right, thank you, Bondo. So I'm gonna talk about the, the contract itself just briefly and the objectives. So Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stanvik. The, there's five objectives. The, there's five objectives with our SRO contracts. One objective was added last year during, this time last year during our conversation. So objective one, to provide, to provide form, process, or rationale to enhance school safety, reduce the need for police, monitor and help prevent gang activity and handle incidents that occur. Number two is to provide service to the school district as a whole. Number three, complete all investigations assigned or generated in the field. Number four, improvement and continual update liaison program. So as, as needs change in the school system, adjust the program as those needs change. And number five, provide culturally relevant services in the schools. And that was what was added in the last contract round. The, we knew that the police, or Columbia Heights Police Department was providing cultural relevant training to the officers. But we really felt strongly that, you know, having the police liaison officers connect with our training that we're doing with the teachers was, was very relevant. And incorporating them into our trainings as we move forward has, has already started to happen. Obviously, last year with COVID and kids not being in the school system most of the year, and then a few at the end of the school year, we did not have liaison officers in our schools, or SROs in our schools for most of the, the school year. And, and only partially towards the end of the school year as we had kids in school, just again because of just the low number of students that we had. And obviously, there's needs in the community as well. So that's, those are the objectives of the contract, which we wanted to review. And then I think it's always important, too. We have our principals on the call as well. Dwayne Burkus, Columbia Academy Principal, and Todd Nguyen, Columbia Heights High School Principal. They work incredibly close with SROs in the buildings as one is, is primarily at Columbia Academy and one primarily at the high school. So we thought it would be important to have them just kind of talk about the program in their schools and the importance of it. And I think with that, I'll just turn it over to Director, or Principal Burkus first. And I'll stop, stop sharing my screen so you can, so you can see him.
Thank you. Yes, Chair Stevenson, members of the board, Superintendent Stendvik. We at Columbia Academy feel very grateful to have Officer Farah at our school as our SRO. We, as all schools do, want to build a community that feels safe to students, that feels welcoming, that builds relationships and trusts, not just amongst each other, but across all different areas of, of the community that they live in. And I see that happen. I see that happen on a daily basis in our school as Officer Farah is out into the hallways, as he's signing up kids for police basketball after school, interacting with kids that he knows, some from fifth grade when he was doing Dare, working with those parents sometimes that come in that are upset or have something that they, they need to, to work on that involves the police. So it's a, I feel a vital part of our school. It, it serves a, a key foundational aspect of, of building, of our building, which is to build that sense that when you come here, it's going to be a safe and predictable environment for you and that the adults there are caring, whatever their role may be. And that hopefully, as we teach our students how to connect with not just each other, but also with adults, that they learn that those connections can be with teachers and police officers, and of course, even principals. But I think, again, that we're fortunate to be able to have such high-quality people that work with us in our schools as our SRO officers. So I, I just see it filling a vital role, again, in the long-term development of our students. And in the short term, the, again, making that environment that we want, helping us, helping us create that in our schools.
That was muted there. Thanks, Dwayne. And I think with that, we'll just turn it over to Principal Nguyen at the high school.
Good evening, Chair Stevenson, members of the board, and Superintendent Stendvik. Thank you for letting me share our opinions at the high school about Officer JP, as well as the Columbia Heights Police Department. I've had an opportunity to serve in multiple districts, and I have to say that this is the closest and strongest and best, most positive relationship I've ever encountered with the police department in general. You know, whether that is inviting, I just had an opportunity to serve as a community member for a hiring process at the police department. And I felt very proud to be a representative of Columbia Heights High School and to be able to give input about who we want serving on a law force. And then when it comes to the school level, we have Officer JP, who, I don't know who doesn't know him. Officer JP has been in our community. He takes great pride in his work. He's very thoughtful in his approach. He builds very strong relationships with kids. He goes out of his way on his own time to come and call the wrestling matches. He's served as an impromptu guest announcer at a football game. Everyone knows him. And he knows kids by name, by face. He, too, says, hey, you want, you one of my Dare kids? So he's built strong relationships over the years, many years, with, with our kids. And I watched JP be used as a resource more than anything by not just our kids, but by community members. And so part of JP's role is explaining what, what rights kids have, what rights parents have. And he does a great job in helping and assisting them navigate the, the system, so to speak. You know, JP is, we, we had a crisis that, you know, it was handled amazingly well the first week of school. We had to call a lockdown. JP was there within seconds of receiving the call. And I felt very confident in literally turning over the call to him. But he was very thoughtful in navigating that with, with, with me. And we were a team. And so I just, I've, I've never had a better resource officer than Officer JP. And I feel so confident and comfortable with him there. He also, so traffic. JP, hey, our security, our security's not out. No trafficker, we have a traffic jam. He's there in a second. He is, he's there to keep our, our school safe. He's there to, to inform kids. He's there to be a resource. He's there to be a cheerleader. And he's very thoughtful when he needs to approach kids. And he serves his role very well. So I can't give him enough accolades. And I'm just really thankful that we have the opportunity to have SRO. You know, and there's this outreach, too, with the open gym. You know, that's, that's a highlight for our community, for our kids to be able to go on Tuesdays, Thursdays and participate. And I'm learning more on the whole reason for open gym. And it's very thoughtful. And, and I, just one more thing I want to talk about before I close tonight. And what I have to say is, you know, typically, when schools have outside officers come in, these officers aren't trained to deal with kids in a school setting. There's a lot of things in school settings that are unique for officers. And I would rather not even have a police officer typically in other school districts come in because I'd rather wait for my resource officer. But I have to say that anyone that's come in from the Columbia Heights Police Department, if JP was not there, or if we needed more support, has been nothing but professional, has been nothing but supportive, has always wanted input. I feel like there's very low, there's not this high ego that comes with them. They're very thoughtful, and it's a true partnership. And so, you know, if, if I have any input in this with 1,100 kids in a school in a very large building, I feel very safe. I feel connected. I feel supported by our Columbia Heights Police Department. And so thank you for your time tonight. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Principal Nguyen. And I guess with that, we will turn it over to the other, the, the people, the part of the presentation in the room. And, and they can just kind of take it from there. So Chief Austin and Captain Markham. Let me get the slides reshared here, and I'll let you guys drive from here.
All right. Chair Stevenson, members of the school board, thank you for the opportunity to come here. It's been a while since we've had a chance to meet live. So it's, it's really, it really is nice to be back. It's, it's been a while. It's been too long. And before we get started, I just want to just mention, too, and just thank the principals and also the superintendent. You know, our job is a lot easier when the leadership of the school district sets the tone. It really does make our job a lot easier. And, and you know, Matt and I have been around a while now. And what I can tell you is, compared to when we started, this district is, the culture here is, it's, it's wonderful. They're here to learn. There's, there's really no drama. They're, they're just, they're just here just to be, be students and to be kids. And it's, it's really refreshing to see that. You don't, you, you know, it seems like school districts are, are taking it on the chin quite often lately. But I'm glad to see that this school district isn't, and it's because of the, the leadership here. So it certainly makes my job easier, and it certainly makes JP's and Ibrahim's job a lot easier because of that. So thank you very much. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Bono, if you, yep, thank you. So we've had a lot of significant changes over the last year and a half, some because of COVID, but also just a lot of it, though, has to do with some of the staffing changes that we've experienced. So as far as some of the things that we wanted to talk about tonight, I thought it would be good to start with staffing changes and then follow up with some of the youth initiatives that we're working on, and then also some of the other new programs and some of the training that our officers are, are also going through to kind of talk about some of the changes that we're seeing here within the department. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with, I believe the next slide is staffing changes. So I just want to just, first of all, touch a little bit on our, on our authorized strengths. So right now, the police department is authorized for 29 sworn officers. And that changed about two years ago when we had, when we had a staffing study conducted by an outside entity. And during that time, it was interesting. The consultants that came in, they have opportunities to work with agencies throughout the United States. And one of the things that the lead consultant mentioned was that for an agency of our size, he has never seen a police department of this size do this much community policing. And, and we, we kind of knew that, but to hear that from an outside entity who travels the United States, it was, it was really interesting to hear. That was also part of the reason, there were a multitude of reasons, but that was one of the reasons that the recommendation came back to increase the number of sworn officers to our, to our department. Part of that also included to include additional CSOs, to include an additional full-time CSO, which bumped that up to two, and then also have a contingent of five part-time CSOs. This has really been a, a great opportunity for us, for a, an opportunity to groom some of our employees at an entry-level position, to, to step them into that officer role down the road, hopefully. And we've had a lot of really, some really great success with that. You know, field training's changed a lot over the years. The amount of things that an officer has to know now compared to, you know, 10, 15 years ago, it's, it's pretty significant, the change. And so to get them into that CSO position early on, to start them on their journey, it really does give them a leg up when they, if, if they're fortunate enough to become a police officer here and go through the formal training process. So over the last 14 months, we've, we've hired actually an additional, oh, before we get to that, sorry, Bono. Oh, Brian. So one other thing, and this was the, probably the biggest change for us, and we're really looking forward to it, is the new position of our embedded social worker. So we actually had budgeted for this, but then, literally, the day after my budget presentation, we found out that we received a two-year grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for this social worker program. And I have to give a shout out to Captain Markham for all of the hard work he did behind the scenes. He, he basically wrote the job description, worked through the contract, worked through interviews, all in a very short period of time. And because of that, it looks like we'll have a tentative start date for this social worker in December. And so we're pretty fortunate that. And if we have some time at the end, hopefully Matt can maybe just talk on that just a little bit. And so with that, we'll go into the, the staffing changes that we've seen on the officer side. Brian, if you want to, there we go. So over the last 14 months, we have done a significant amount of hiring. So this, this just goes to show the, the number of officers that we've hired roughly over the last 14 months. Since I've been here, I don't recall ever going through this amount of hiring. Part of it's because of some of the retirements. We've had a couple of officers that, that resigned, and then we also had a couple of officers that also went on to different agencies. And so with all of that, we ended up going through and, and running, ran nine officers through, through the field training program over the last 14 months to include a couple of Heights grads, which, a couple of them, you might remember. I certainly remember Tony because I think all of us at the police department, I think, have known him since he was a freshman in high school. So it was really great to see him come on board. And he was one of our CSOs as well. And it was, it was, it was good to start him in that position. And you might recognize another name there with the last name Nightingale. Yes, that is a second-generation Nightingale for the Columbia Heights Police Department. That is his son. And he is literally a chip off the old block. We expect great things out of Andrew. And I, I, I think, I can't wait to watch his, watch his career move forward. So that goes with, leads us into current openings. We still have three current openings. We're actually doing pretty well compared to other agencies. I do believe we should have those openings taken care of, hopefully by spring, if all goes well. And then we also have a couple of part-time CSO openings. We're actually, as Principal Nguyen mentioned, we're, we're in the process of going through the officer hiring, as well as the CSO hiring. And so we're hoping to get, start onboarding officers and CSOs around the first of the year. And then we also currently have an open record tech position. And we actually believe that that person will be on board sometime in mid to late December. So getting back to what we talked about a little bit with some of the youth outreach, things that we, we currently do with the school district. And this is the unique thing, and I have to really compliment JP and Abraham on this because they do a lot of the heavy lifting on this. And a lot, most of these ideas are their ideas. And some of them, you know, are still fairly new. And, but just some really great feedback. I got to tell you, you know, two of my, probably my personal favorites. Obviously, the Big Brothers program that we've all been involved in over the years. I put an asterisk there because I know our, our current contact at Big Brothers is going down to a part-time position, I believe. So that's a little bit in limbo, but we still plan on continuing with that program. And then, and then my second favorite is the Cooking with the Cops program, which I honestly didn't know what to expect the first time we did it. But I got to leave it to JP. He, he pulled off a, a couple of great events. And, and hopefully, if things continue to go well, we'll be able to continue with those programs down, down the road here in the near future. And then some upcoming initiatives. So this coming week, we will be working with the school district with some, with- with some training that we're putting together, and we're looking forward to that. This is the first time in a very long time that we've had an opportunity to do this type of training with the staff. And so we're very excited about doing that. And then the other thing that I'll mention is, this is something that we continue to look at, is what else can we do, or what can we tweak, or what can we change to make an impact, a positive impact with the school district? There are a couple of things that we are looking at internally that I think we would like to do. We just got to kind of put some finishing touches on it before we talk with the school leadership on it. But I think we've got some really exciting ideas that we can, that we'll be able to move forward with here in the near future. And then a couple of our newer initiatives that we've also started. The first one, actually, we've been working on this for a couple of years. COVID, like we said, has changed a lot of things. And this certainly put us on the shelf with this. But this was a, this has been an initiative that we've been working with, with the Adult Education Center, called Rights and Responsibilities of Communities and Police. And so this is something that we worked with the faculty at the Adult Education Center on. And we also partnered with the National Constitution Center in Philadelphia on this. And it was actually an opportunity for us to work side by side with the faculty and develop a curriculum based on, basically kind of a hybrid between civics, rights and responsibilities of citizens. And then also, you know, because of the students that they teach there, most of them are fairly new to this country. It's an opportunity for us to really have a conversation about what it is that the police department does, and probably just as important, what we don't do. And then also, the importance of active citizenship, especially with our, with the students, since most of them, all of them are adults. It really has been a great opportunity for us. I got to tell you, going through that training with the teachers, you know, I think we probably got more out of it than the students will. But it's, it is interesting, if you folks have never had an opportunity to check into the National Constitution Center, it's a great resource. And it was really, it's been, it's been a lot of fun, and we're hoping that we can continue to build on this. I think we're about, I think, what are we, four weeks into that now? With this class? Yeah, so we, so we're actually working with the class right now, and I think we're in our fourth week with that. So where the officers are working with the teachers, and it's been, it's been, it's been a lot of fun. It's been, it's been great. So the other thing, we did start this past year, has been, we started, we actually started a podcast, which has been, which has been a lot of fun. It's an opportunity for us to talk about different criminal justice initiatives, and also some different parts of the system. So for example, this last month, we had the Anoka County Attorney, Attorney Tony Palumbo on our podcast to talk about Domestic Assault Awareness Month, and talk about the county attorney side of things, and what they do, especially some of the things that they do when it comes to domestic violence, which for Anoka County is very unique. They've had a lot of, they take this very seriously, and they've had a lot of success with the prosecution of domestic assault cases. Recruitment and retention initiatives, this is something that we've also really stepped up on. Obviously, it's something that, you know, is talked a lot about in the media. We've been impacted as well as other agencies. I think we've done a little better, we've weathered the storm a little bit better than some. But it is something that we can, we are continuing with. And then our internship program, this is something we started a few months ago now, and it's been a partnership with Anoka County, and it's been fantastic. These are paid internships. And we were able to actually bring on a senior here from the high school, as well as a, as well as an alum who's a freshman at the University of Minnesota right now. And they've been fantastic to work with. And it's a nice opportunity for them to get an idea on what it is that we do. And one of the, one of our interns is definitely looking at a career in policing. The other one, she's not so sure, but she's certainly interested in it. And it's been, it's been a lot of fun for them, and it's also been a great opportunity for us. And then some of the training that we've, we've, we've really, we've done a lot of training this year, and I think moving forward, we'll continue to do quite a bit of training. I think that is an area that, that I'm glad the post-board is starting to make some changes on as well. But these are some of the things that we've added. A couple of things that I do want to point out specifically. The autism training is something that is new, that's mandated. It is something that we have had training on in the past, but now there's a, there's a specific number of hours of training that we have to do between each post-licensing cycle. And then of course, crisis intervention training. This is something that the police department here, we've been working, we've been doing for several years, long before it was a mandated, mandated training. And so it's definitely something that we've seen some great results with. And then another thing that we implemented about a year and a half ago is this training called ICAT, which stands for Integrating Communication, Assessment, and Tactics. And just real quick on that, this is something that the Police Executive Research Forum out of Washington DC actually created. And it's actually based on a lot of training that is conducted over in Scotland Yard. Because of the type of environment that they deal with, where, you know, their officers, most of them do not carry firearms, you know, how they handle situations is very different compared to how we have handled situations in the past. They were able to take a lot of that information, develop this program, and it's been very, very good for us to start to integrate that type of training. It really adds to the crisis intervention training that we're already doing. The duty to intervene training, that is also something that is also now mandated, but we actually added to it. The main, the main component for duty to intervene training is the importance of intervening in situations where like a use of force situation that's getting out of hand, those types of situations. But we take it to a different level, where we talk about the morality of these things. And then also the importance of not only intervening in those major incidents, but also intervening when we see maybe that level of professionalism start to wane a little bit. And so it's, we actually just had that training, and it's probably been some of the best training we've had, and the feedback from the officers have been great. So we also updated our use of force training over the last year. And I, and what I can tell you is, as this new use of force training that we have, we've continued to work on, as we continue to gain competency in it, I think what you'll find, one of the concerns that we always have is the, is injury with persons that we have to use force with, but also the officers. And the type of training that we're doing now, I do believe it will, it will lower those in both situations. And also, they're generally lower levels of force, the type of training that we're using. And then lastly, the Fourth Amendment training that we're going through. This is something that, believe it or not, is not post-mandated. I don't know why, because it's the one area that probably gets officers, they have, when it comes to getting a case dismissed, or something like that. Or if it's a situation where an officer perhaps gets in a little bit of trouble, it's because of Fourth Amendment issues. And so, and that Fourth Amendment, I mean, the case law on Fourth Amendment issues, I mean, it's constantly changing. So this is something that we have also added, and will continue to build off of that. And so with that, that's just a real high-level overview of what's going on at the police department. And with that, we can answer any questions that you might have.
All right, questions? Is that a yes?
Yes, I've got questions.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay, so Director Nwambie, can we back up to the survey data? Is it possible? I think it might be.
Yes, we can.
Just give me a second, I'll back up.
Thank you. I think I'm curious about those numbers.
Sorry, I accidentally closed it out.
Oh, no, that's okay. I can, I can, I have them written down too. But I'm just curious, you said 612 students completed the survey, and it was given to seventh grade through twelfth grade. I don't know what the enrollment numbers were during the time that that was given, but looking at the number, just based on our current enrollment, for those grades that we received on Friday, it looks like that would be about 39% of the student body. Do we have any other demographics available for who completed the survey?
Yeah, so that survey was conducted last year when we were in distance learning. So students were attending school from home, and that's how they participated. So the total number of participant was 616. And yes, we can even provide you the presentation that we did last year, which has demographic breakdown of all two kids.
Okay. I have lots more questions, but other people can jump into.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Thanks.
So I want to make a comment, and one, I have a question that's more for Principal Burkus and Principal Nguyen. But you know, I will say, I've had some community members who have talked with me about this. And I wanted to share specifically with you both that I think Principal Nguyen had talked about the situation, the threat that was at the high school earlier this year. And I organically had students having conversations with me that they felt better knowing that Officer JP was in the building during that time. So I wanted to say that, just to share that information. And I thought it was interesting too, because it was a group of students that were having a conversation near me, that were organically having that conversation, and kind of more amongst themselves, that I just happened to be listening to. That being said, again, for Principal Burkus and Principal Nguyen, you know, I think we need to acknowledge the data that exists, that some students don't feel safe with officers in schools. And so I'm curious if any of the, to Principal Nguyen and Principal Burkus, if it has been reported to you or to your staff, students who don't feel safe with an SRO in the building? And if so, kind of how is that addressed or acknowledged?
Yeah, Dwayne, if you don't mind, I'd like to start that. You know, my tenure here has been very short. And so at this point, you know, three months in, I have not received one comment from any student or parent regarding anything negative, or anything about safety with our officers. That's where I'm at right now, formal or informal, I haven't heard one. One, I haven't received an email, I've had no one call me, I've had no one come up to me and talk to me.
I'm kind of on the opposite end of the spectrum, been around a long time. I haven't either. I have not had a student in my time at the middle school come up to me and say that they weren't comfortable having an SRO there. In fact, I think what the data revealed in the, when we were collecting it, that many students felt very strongly that they felt better knowing what they see on the news that happens at times, those big emergencies. Felt better knowing that we had an SRO in the building.
Thank you. Can I clarify something?
Yeah.
So do we as a school board in a school district get to pick who our SROs are?
So Chair Searson, and members of the board, when there is a process, we work very closely with the superintendent and the principals. And we want consensus on that, because we understand that the reality is, I mean, we're a guest there too. And we have to make sure that, you know, it's one thing to pick the officer, but it also has to be the right fit. And what I can tell you is, we, in years past, prior to JP, we have had to make those changes. And so if it is a situation where, you know, the next SRO that is in the schools, if it doesn't look like it's working out, we will, we will work with the school district on that and the leadership to address that.
And I think, Mary, it's not really us as a board who is involved in that, but the administration.
Right.
Yes, has its say in process.
Thank you for that. I just, I'm curious, because we keep talking about very specific officers. However, we are not renewing a contract for specific officers, we are renewing a contract for the police department.
Right. And that was something that was brought up last time when we addressed this thoroughly. And I had a lot of assurance that the police department is open and receptive. So if as board members, we are reporting things to our superintendent, that would be fleshed out, and in fact, has been in the past.
And can I also speak and address the board about one more thing? As far as JP, it feels very systemic, like this is part of what he's asked to do. He is constantly seeking feedback from me. We debrief after almost any situation. He asks me about how, what I thought about how he handled the situation. And there are a lot of incidents where we work together. And he is constantly seeking, and also defining what he's expected to do from Columbia Heights Police Department, but also wants to receive feedback on how I would like it to go in the high school. And I know I'm speaking about an individual, but I definitely appreciate reflection, because we're humans, and we always want to get better. And there's a strong will for JP to approach things the way that fits how we do things at the high school.
I just want to make a comment more than anything.
Yeah.
First of all, thank you both for being here, and thank you for what you provide to our community. We are talking about two very specific individuals, but those two individuals have carried out, you know, your mission as well as ours. I truly believe they keep our kids safe, and they would do anything in that situation. Relationships matter. We know that their de-escalation is better because of their relationships, if it's needed, things of that nature. And so as, as a parent of children of color, and their friends, they have all spoken to this issue in the past and again. And they all value having the SRO in the school. I think we've all seen some of our neighboring districts who have gotten rid of it, and some of the things that have gone downhill. And so I just want to speak to say thank you, and that I do value this contract.
Any more questions, comments, also open to comments? Said you had more, Mary, do you want to ask another one?
Yeah, I mean, so I'm glad that, I've heard some positive things about having SROs in the, in our schools too. And I have had opportunity to engage with them. And, you know, Chief, you and I talked about it a little bit last week too, and I value that. One thing that I did have a student tell me about their experience this year in the middle school was, and this is a quote, "The officers walk back and forth across the lunchroom, not talking to anyone. Where else do you see that but in a prison?" And while I think, as adults, we can sort of dismiss that as hyperbole, we can't, and we should not dismiss that, because that's a real feeling for somebody in our, in our schools. And I think that that's the piece that gets missed sometimes in these conversations. Not necessarily here, because we do talk about it a lot. I think my question about the data is that, you know, can we actually say that 616 students out of, you know, 1,500 responding, is that overwhelming support? Can we, you know, those are the questions that I have, because I hear from families that, and we heard from it last year at this time too, where families were coming in, and tearful about the experience of how hard it is for some students to see that, to see an officer, you know, fully, you know, in full officer outfits, and, you know, armed and things like that. And I think, I'm glad so many kids have a great experience. I'm not as worried about them as I am about the kids that are having a trauma response every time that they, they turn a corner and they see a police officer. And I think as trauma-responsive schools, and as a equity-minded board, we have to, we have to lay that out on the table.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I Yeah, I agree. I mean, I, I, I see, I absolutely see what you're saying and the value of each and every student, right? And I, I, I would love to see us be able to work with those students to help them in their trauma, you know. We're a trauma, we're trying to move toward trauma informed schools. Having said that, again, personally, I'm in support of the contract, but I definitely hear you, Mary, on that one. Like, how do we help students who come from this variety of feelings about it? You know, we hear from students who feel safer because JP and Officer Farrar are in the schools and, and taking that away could feel traumatic to other students, right? So we have to play in this atmosphere where we can come alongside those things. So, you know, I think that's a great, a great thought. But also, it's a lot of stuff going on.
One thing that I did have several people reach out and ask, and I thought I would put it out there too, is that would it be possible for our officers, our SROs to not have to wear the full fatigues? Could they come in more casual clothes? Do they have to have their sidearm with them at all times? Is it possible for them to not do that? I know other school districts are, have their officers, their resource officers not be armed in the school, specifically Burnsville. So I'm just wondering if that's, and I know that that's sort of been talked about before, but I'm just wondering if that's another...
Specifics of the contract, I think we could, as a board, I don't know if this is like the negotiating point.
For sure.
For the specifics of our contract is, or I think getting the idea to Superintendent Stenvik.
For sure.
Directing it this way, not forcing them to answer that question on the spot here tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Probably, that's normally how we do contract stuff, so.
For sure.
Yep. As a point, yep.
I figured this would just be a really good opportunity to sort of get that, that feedback from the community out there. So, thank you.
No, it's great.
Thank you both so much.
No, thank you.
And I have one last question. I guess this would be whoever helped with the survey last year. But that survey was in fact emailed to every student in seventh through twelfth grade, right? And that was when they were doing distance learning. So everybody was typically, I mean, I feel.
If I dig deep enough in the pile, I probably have it, all the demographic breakdowns that we provided too.
I remember we got it, but I wasn't, yeah.
I mean, I hear you, Mary, but I also want to, like, you know, comment on that, that I feel like if anyone really had any overwhelming feelings, that that opportunity was provided for them. So that number, I think, is, is valid, I guess, is what I'm getting at. Does that make sense? Like, I would put a little more weight to it. If they hadn't ever been on distance learning and then it was emailed and they weren't, but that was kind of their norm every day. And so it was there for feedback.
For sure. I also want to recognize the fact that I did have students and families say that they didn't feel comfortable filling out the survey because they weren't sure how their results were going to be received by the, by folks. So that, I think that that's also a valid concern. We cannot forget about the power differential. And that's something that we talked about in the very beginning with that survey.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? We will revisit this at our next regular board meeting in two weeks. There'll be a motion to approve the contract at that point. All right. Thank you so much for coming up tonight, staying so late.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Get in on a nice, long meeting tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And maybe a lot less fanfare in the boiler and roofs category. The high school roof replacement bids. Are the mics feedback, like, are they buzzing? They're buzzing, right? I heard Mary's buzz, I heard his buzz. You're just pushing further away?
Are your speakers on in your computer, maybe?
What's that?
Are you, like, on the Zoom on your computer?
Oh, no, I'm, nobody's on Zoom.
I didn't know if anyone else was. I mean, it's there, so.
If Director Hennigan thinks we should point them further downwards or push them farther away from us, he can, he's doing the roof bids for us, so he could let us know.
Director Hennigan, tell us all about roof bids and our microphones.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. Yeah, microphones, best case scenario, pointed right at you, a bottle, distance away, it's like twelve inches. And then I'll go on to the roof bid. So our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And the core values represented in this presentation of excellence, collaboration, and integrity. So this is an informational item with no board governance tonight, but I will be bringing it back to the board for approval as an action item November twenty-third at the regular school board meeting. So very similar to last year, so be very brief on this. The high school, we did a, I guess almost two years ago now, we, we, we did a, a study of all of our roofs and identified roofs that were at the end of their life expectancy and needed to be replaced in the next five years. And, and so we've been progressively going through those roofs. And this past summer, we did the east wing of the high school. And this next year, we're going to do the west wing of the high school. So highlighted in green are the sections of the roof that are part of this bid. And we had the bid recently here. And so that's roof section C1, C2, C3, and C4. Again, Peterson Brothers Roofing was the lowest responsible bidder at seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, which is very close to last year's bid. So it did not go up very much at all, based from last year. And it really, it's, it's approximately the same square footage as last year and approximately the same number of, of rooftop units and things that are in the way for the roughers. So it's a, it's very comparable to what we did last year. So again, the timeline, September twenty-eighth, you guys approved the, the bid authorization and we posted to the paper. November second, we received and opened up the bids. November ninth is, which is tonight, we're making a recommendation to move forward as an informational. And then the twenty-third, we'll move it to action. And then June twenty-two is when the, we'll actually start, which is projected right now. We haven't finalized, or finalized the, the timelines with Peterson Roofing, but we've worked a lot with Peterson Roofing in the past. They do a lot of our roof repairs as well. So very familiar with Peterson Roofing and, and, and we will, we recommend moving forward with them at our next school board meeting as an action item. Any questions on that? And this, this is a funded project through long-term facility maintenance.
All right. Questions on roofs?
Can I make two comments?
Of course.
One, Director Hennigan has done an excellent job anticipating my questions there. So I'm feeling a little wind out of my sails on that. But I do appreciate the information as compared to the previous roof project. Actually, that was going to be my big question, if we were seeing any big price differences from last year to this year or this coming year, knowing supply chain issues and product issues. The other question I have is, is the company confident that they will be able to complete this work on our timeline during that timeframe of the June to August, based on supply chain, product shortage issues, turnaround time, and the labor issues?
Yes. Something we're very concerned about, they, there's, there, we got out early enough where we feel, they feel confident. And I, I'm, I'm leaning on their confidence that they can, they can get the product we need. Insulation seems to be the toughest one at the moment with lead times larger than we've ever seen. But the lead times that they currently have for that, for the insulation is still well within getting this approved and getting things ordered. So we feel confident that we should be able to meet those unless something significantly changes.
Thank you. I have one more question.
Oh, yeah. I was just going to say, thanks for planning ahead. I mean, that's the joy of planning ahead, I guess.
Well, and, yeah, I mean, there's a six-month lead time on some of the product. But so is there a, and I will admit, I didn't read the whole thing that was published or anything for the bid, but is there a performance bond? Is there requirements that they are finished on their timing? So that's all, all put in there as well, right?
Yep, it's all in there.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any more questions? All right. We'll move on. Northeast Metro nine sixteen joint powers agreement. It's been a while since we've heard on this one, right? It's, it's back.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. And so Northeast Metro Intermediate School District nine sixteen joint powers agreement update. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And I believe all core values are represented in this presentation, given what nine sixteen is and does for us. So this is just an informational tonight and it'll be back as an action item on November twenty-third. So joint powers agreement, JPA background. So this was, this, this organization was formed back in nineteen sixty-nine. So this, and this joint powers agreement has existed as is that long. So it's, it's definitely stood the test of time, so to speak. And this conversation about the joint powers agreement with nine sixteen is something that really started when we heard a lot of things in the news about Intermediate School District two eighty-seven. And a school district separating, Bloomington separating from their, from, from that, that intermediate school district. And, and their joint powers agreement, like this one or the previous, or this current, our current joint powers agreement with Intermediate School District nine sixteen, is very, didn't cover districts leaving their organization or leaving the joint powers very well. So really, the intention of, of a lot of these updates is just to really be very clear what it means for a district to withdraw from the straight powers agreement. And, and then also to clean up some of the language. So again, with this, this agreement, it's, it's really, it's a degree, it's a joint powers between school districts to form this entity of Northeast Metro nine sixteen. And, you know, really to, for districts to be able to combine resources and, and provide resources to students that, you know, in a better way that we wouldn't have been able to do on our own. So, you know, the, the entity itself provides a great service to our member districts. So with the new GPA, JPA, it will replace the original. A lot of, there's a lot of language in the new JPA that comes from that original nineteen sixty-nine document. A lot of it is cleaning up, just cleaning up some of the language. The makeup of the board is the same. But again, it's just cleaning up the language within that section of, of the, the makeup of that school board. You know, there's some additional definitions that come into play, defining parameters for non-member enrollment and enrollment after a member withdraws. Like I said, there's a lot about withdrawal. So, you know, if a, if a student's enrolled in nine sixteen before the member district withdraws, they may remain enrolled, but now they have to pay the non-member fee. So defining those things, they just weren't previously defined in the, in the, in the JPA. Withdrawing member will not be entitled to receive assets. So if we were to withdraw, we weren't, we would not be able to take any assets of nine sixteen with us. Clear language requiring a district to assure approval of its share of nine sixteen's cost through levies is allowed under state law. So really just defining that, you know, so we do levy some dollars specifically for nine sixteen as, as statute allows us to do. You know, we do, I pass a long-term facility maintenance and I bring it to the board every school year to allow dollars from our district to move over to nine sixteen in long-term facility maintenance for their facility maintenance. And it also added in a definite, defining a, a review process for the JPA. So, you know, like I said at the beginning, our existing JPA, the one that we're operating on right now is the original JPA. And it just had, you know, it's, it's just been the same over the test of time. And now, you know, it's very clear to us as, as things change more rapidly, we need to review this JPA, you know, every so often to make sure that it's, it's continuing to serve what it, what's it, what it's intended to do. And then I think the biggest thing is the money. So what happens when a member district leaves? What money does that district owe? And so it really created a, a section ten within the JPA that defined what that would be. So it also defined when we must give notice. So a member district wishing to withdraw must provide notice by February first with withdrawal, with withdrawal effective June thirtieth of the following fiscal year. Notice of withdrawal must be via resolution passed by the member district's board. And some of you, at least one of you may be familiar with that. Some of you are familiar with that, with our ties withdrawal and, and what that process looked like. This would be very similar. A withdrawing member is obligated to pay two different sums upon withdrawal. So the debt service obligation, so there is debt, you know, within the organization and all of the districts pay a portion of that. So there, there's, you know, formula to, to figure out what that is. So there's a per adjusted pupil unit debt service rate that, that they figure out. It's, it's actually defined in the JPA, multiplied by the withdrawing member's projected APO. So that's the first payment. And then the membership equivalence fee. So, you know, basically just what the member would have paid in membership fees for the following fiscal year. So because a district, you know, of course, it depends on the size of district and how many students they have within the organization and what's their, their current portion of, of nine sixteen. One district can impact nine sixteen more than another withdrawing. But the intention of this is just to make sure that, or has the potential to, I shouldn't say. But the intention of this is to ensure that the organization can continue to achieve its goals in servicing the students and that one district leaving doesn't adversely affect the organization or the students it's, it's supporting. So we have had legal counsel look through this and the revisions that have gone on. We've had superintendent meetings that Superintendent Stenvik has been a part of, some of, at least one of them I've been a part of as well. So it's been definitely thoroughly been discussed and reviewed from legal and currently is, is at member districts, like it is here tonight, being passed. Because once it's passed by all member districts, then it can be ratified as the new JPA for nine sixteen. Any questions?
Laura? Yeah, I noticed that one of the things we were, we were discussing when this revision and writing the new GPA, GPA was occurring, was having an annual review of the JPA. But now I see that it's every five years.
Yeah.
Okay. There's no mechanism for a yearly review?
I'd have to go back and look at whether it left something open for that in the actual JPA. So I'd have to get back to you on that. I can definitely put something in the update specifically on that.
Yeah, I just, with the, with the, the first go around with this rewriting of the agreements, I know that a lot of things didn't quite work well. So I just want to make sure that we have a mechanism to make sure that we're, we're staying updated with any potential issues that there might be in the agreement. Thanks.
Yep.
So just definitively, we're more comfortable with this than where we left it. The last time it seemed very complicated. I got lost the last time, honestly, in the presentation.
There was a major revision.
Okay, great.
And a lot of collaboration among, among the member districts and conversations. But yes, particularly section ten was completely rewritten.
Okay.
To, to a more palatable process.
And legal counsel is totally on board now.
Yep.
Okay. Other questions? All right. Thank you so much, Director Hennigan.
Thank you.
I would like to welcome Don. I would like to welcome Don Hoyam for the school board election clerk. All right, here we go. Just trying to psych myself up. Here we go.
Good evening. Chair Sieverson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. I'm here tonight to present more exciting information on elections.
Thanks for pumping me up.
It's been a long evening for everyone here in the room. Okay, we are here to talk about the school district special election combining the polling places. This resolution would have combined 13 polling places down to two pre, or sorry, yeah, 13 precincts down to two precincts in the event we had to hold a special election. This would be a cost savings to the district and this resolution needs to be passed every year by December 31st. It will be brought forward at the November 23rd meeting for approval.
It's, this is an annual?
Annual.
Every year, same thing.
Yep, on the cover sheet, it shows you what this, what the precincts will be shrunk down to, the two precincts that we.
Same as ever.
Same thing as last year and the year before.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for helping us with this.
And I get the word this week.
Pro saving money.
Where does presentation goes to?
I know. Somebody send her a cookie tomorrow. All right, action items. World's best work, I'm losing my ability to speak. World's Best Workforce in Review with Directors Tuckroll and Stunkroll. Stunkroll, as I've said before.
And now we're together, even more fun.
That's what it started in the last meeting. You, as I recall, you weren't able to attend, but I said Stunkroll for the first time then. And now it's back, so.
We're back together. CDB, Chair Sieverson, members of the boards, Superintendent Stenbik. I'm here tonight with Director Stunkroll seeking approval of the 2020-2021 World's Best Workforce Annual Report. The annual report was presented at the last school board meeting. And as mentioned, we don't have results for our goals due to the impact of COVID-19 on our state assessments. Although as a district, we are still data-rich. We still have a lot of data to support instruction, including fast bridge and district assessments. And the data from these assessments has been shared with stakeholders. So we share it at the building level through the strategic direction cards that you just heard from the principals and prior board meetings. We share it at committee meetings such as World's Best Workforce, as well as conferences with our families. So we're hoping that this school year, we have more comprehensive data this spring as we collect the state assessment data. But we're happy with what we have so far in terms of using the data we have for instruction. So here tonight, seeking approval of the 2020-2021 World's Best Workforce Annual Report to be posted online.
All right, looking for a motion to approve the World's Best Workforce Annual Report.
So moved.
Laura? Second? Lorian? Any discussion? I know we discussed, we had some discussion around this last time we met, but any further discussion? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, have a great night.
Yeah, you too. Last, certainly not least, appointment of a new school board member. So the school board will appoint a replacement for school board member Hala Samurai. For those watching at home, we've gone through an interview process. We were able to interview two candidates two weeks ago before our last regular school board meeting. And then this evening at 5:45, we were able to interview a third candidate. All of them applied during the same application window, but we were in need of two nights for the interviews. So we're working with new data. We did take time after interviews to have a discussion, the meeting prior to this. And so I want to pick that discussion back up by saying, I'll just kind of make an opening statement, that we were super encouraged that we had three, three people who we really felt we could interview and, and felt we could move forward with confidence with each of them. Oh, that's right, look at me. Thank you, Don. This is why, this is one of thousands of reasons why you're here. So a motion for the resolution to fill the vacancy. Can I get a motion to? Well, this is what I asked earlier, so I'm confused because I can't make the motion because there's no name. We make the motion to discuss? All right, so make the motion to discuss the replacement of Hala Samurai.
So moved.
Molly? Second, second, Lorian? All right. I need, so now we discuss. And then we have a resolution vote, correct? But we have to state the resolution with the person's name in it, once again, correct? Or do we vote for the discussion?
We have to vote on the motion.
To discuss?
To discuss.
Okay, all right, motion to discuss the replacement of Hala Samurai. Still, still Molly?
All in favor? Oh, sorry.
Still Molly and Lorian? That's who?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries.
Just like, want to put it out there? Some of us have been here since 5 o'clock, so.
Yeah, it's been a while.
It's been a while.
Thank you, thanks for having my back there.
I got you.
I, I, I think I asked about that earlier and I probably just misheard the answer. But we can have a discussion now. So I think one of the things that continue up, continuing where I picked up last time was we were excited that we had three candidates who we could all see positives in. I think coming out of the interview and our earlier discussion, if I had to summarize it, I would say it was great to see three members of the community who are excited about our schools and interested in being a part of this. I think that says a lot about our community and it says a lot about people's desire to step up and be a part of what's happening in our school district, which in some ways eases our decision because we had three great candidates, but also makes it more difficult because we had three candidates. We saw positives in each of them. I guess I'm just going to open up the conversation to see where people want to pick it up from where we left off. So I'm opening the floor to whoever wants to speak.
Can I go first?
Yeah.
So I went last, last time, right? Now I'm going to jump in and go first.
Way to do it.
You know, I've been thinking, this is a tough decision. You know, the board, this, this is probably one of the hardest things we are going to have to do because we are appointing someone to serve on the board that is normally chosen through, through an election. And I think we all see how important that decision is in terms of making sure that the district and the board's goals continue to move forward as well as having accurate representation of our community, that we do this through the appointment. And I've, you know, listened and participated in the interviews and I feel like I really listened and processed to the conversations that we had at the last meeting. And, and two things stood out for me in terms of, of candidates. One is, as I mentioned, to, to give a voice to those who may not already be representative, represented on the board. And I feel like through our interview process, we had two candidates who stood out to me that talked about ways or, or had the ability to provide representation or advocacy for voices that maybe we don't currently have on the board now. The other part that, you know, I, I wanted to focus on, I really looked at through our interview questions is, is moving our board's goals forward. And really looking at the community engagement and equity pieces that we've, that we've committed to as a board. And, you know, who could speak specifically about the processes and measurables to, to do that, to be participatory in the direction that we're moving. And I felt we had two candidates who did that. Interestingly enough, they were not the same two candidates. The first question is the second question. That being said, for me, there was one candidate who did check both those boxes. And so I know as we kind of ran short on our time and I'm not sure kind of what our process is here as we, we talk about that. But it really leads me to think that, that there is a candidate out there, I think, that can, that can check the boxes for all of us, for what the board needs at this point.
What are others feeling? What are you thinking to speak both languages of feelers and thinkers?
I mean, I feel like I, I said a lot earlier.
Okay.
And so I was trying to be cognizant of that. But I think Lorian kind of, you know, did a very nice summation of all of that conversation. I think one of the things that stood out to me as well was when Member Palmer said that whoever does step into this role or get appointed has the support of everybody else of this, on this board. I don't want anyone to come in here and be set up for failure. And so that, that really struck me as well. And, and then just speaking about moving our board goals forward, that's why I kind of asked that question. And Member Granlin, I appreciated your honesty and input about that because I don't want us to meet or to check one box off, but to really do a disservice to what we have set in our, our missions and our goals. And so I feel very comfortable with, I am assuming the same candidate that Lorian is talking about. I don't know what, at what point we throw names out there, but.
Thank you for that, Member Lewis. I agree, I think this is one of the hardest decisions that we will have to make for sure, for sure. And that's even after, you know, I had some pretty hard questions for our, around our SRO contract. I still think that this is a lot harder. The stakes are, are really big and this is a conver, a school board is, you know, none of us ever got on the school board thinking that we were going to be like on the front pages of newspapers and things like that. And yet, school board and the topics of our, what schools are doing nationally are in everybody's mind suddenly. And so I think it is really important that we're, that we continue to focus on, you know, what, on moving forward and how do we do that? And yeah, I think that it's a, again, it's a hard conversation and I'm, I'm glad that we were able to have some really, you know, have some really great questions and candidates and really be able to dig into sort of what our hope is for our, our school community.
No part, you don't have to have pressure to add, but if you want to, I want to leave it for.
No, I'm, this, this is, it's a, it's a tough decision and yet it's an easy one. I, I don't know how else to, to describe it. I don't, I don't feel like I can make the wrong choice. I know, I, I don't think I can. I think we've got three great community members that really put themselves forward and, and have, have the, the best interest of the district and our students in mind. Like Lorian had said, I mean, everybody is saying pretty much that, you know, along the same lines that I'm thinking here. You know, my main concern, of course, is moving forward with our board goals. Making sure that our community is represented. Making sure, you know, that, that we're not, I, I really want to seek a voice that's, that's different from my own. Because I really do need that, that input and insight to be able to make good decisions. I need another lens to look through. I, I, you know, I've, I've got my candidate one and two and it's probably going to be more like two and one.
All right, so based on earlier discussion, I'm going to actually discuss the person's name. Are we good, are we ready to move on to that?
I believe so.
Looks like it, we're good here? Okay. So I would then suggest we move forward and insert the name in the resolution of Brenn assignment. Is that where we're at?
Yes.
All right, okay. So again, thanks to the other two people who went through this whole interview process. We are thankful for you, we're thankful for your care and concern for the students of our schools. And ask for your continued input as we move forward and your valued perspective and ideas. And you each had a unique expertise that we were, we were all excited about. Maybe, maybe it'd be awesome if we had a new member board, but it wouldn't be because that would just make decision-making even harder, right? So I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution and then ask for a motion to move this resolution forward. Does that sound good? Don, that's what we need to do? All right, all right. Resolution appointing school board member. Whereas school board member Hala Samurai resigned from the Columbia Heights School Board effective September 3rd, 2021, whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.09 SD5, what's SD? SD5 states that the board must be filled, the board must be filled by a board appointment for the remainder of the unexpired term. Whereas the school district has asked residents of Columbia Heights Public School District to apply for the unexpired term and has conducted interviews of those applying. Now therefore be it resolved that the Columbia Heights Independent School District Number 13 School Board will hereby appoint Brenn assignment to fill out the remaining unexpired term until December 31st, 2022. Can I have a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Is that Laura?
Second.
Laura? Molly? Any further discussion on this resolution?
I just wanted to.
Go. Molly, then Mary.
I just wanted to be really well-known and acknowledge that we had a very robust, excellent conversation amongst us as a board. It was probably one of the best discussions that I think we've, we've had. And when I say best, I mean, looking at this thoroughly, equity lens applied, all of those different things that we discuss. This was not taken lightly. And so I just want to, I appreciate the conversation earlier and truly appreciate the three people that came forward.
That, you beat me to it, Molly. I agree.
Sorry.
100%, no, hashtag co-signed. Nice work.
Like, hit the like button, right? All right. Any further discussion? All right, this is a roll call vote.
Granlin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
And Sieverson?
Aye. Motion carries. More information on that moving forward. Let me save this note and move forward in the board book. All right, moving on to board topics.
I have two.
All right, thanks, Lorian.
Yep. First, Member Lewis and I, again, because we're just being cautious of open meeting conversations, so I wanted to talk about this here. Superintendent Stenbik, we need to schedule a Subcommittee on Community Engagement meeting. And Member Lewis and I would like to see if our student member is available Tuesday, the 16th, after the work session. That's typically when the committee meets, 7:00, 7:30-ish. If not, Member Lewis and I are flexible that week for other evenings that she would be available. We'd like to schedule that around her schedule.
Can I add? That we may want to look at our new member as well and their schedule? I don't know if we, Hala was serving in that role previously and.
They won't get sworn in.
Never mind.
Till December.
I knew that.
Yeah, so I was thinking, I was thinking the same thing, but I think we're late on this meeting. So if we did this one now and then did the other one in January?
Perfect.
We could do it that way.
Thank you. Thanks for thinking for me. It's been a long day.
As the chair of the subcommittee, my job.
Yeah, and at that January 4th, or January, whatever, the early, is it 4th? I don't know. The first Tuesday of the month when we meet, I think it's the 4th, we will reassign to subcommittees. At that point, I think we can assign subcommittee duties.
Can I please stay on policy? I like policy.
Yes.
We all know, Laura.
One of those 5 o'clock meetings I can't always do. So that we can keep moving. Yes. My second is just reminding our community members that the high school is putting on Clue on stage this weekend. So Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday afternoon. Tickets are available online, social distancing, support the kiddos. It's great to have them back on stage, so.
My family already bought tickets, they're very excited. So Clue is a funny one, so.
We watched the movie in preparation. Excellent.
Other board topics?
You have to say it, Maddie.
Is there any other other this evening? Any other other? All right, hearing none. We will adjourn this meeting at 9:15 PM.